Okay, ready? Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there additions or corrections? No? If not, all those in favor of approving the agenda indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. I'd like to take this opportunity to greet David Blow and his class. I'm sure you will find this probably the most exciting evening of the second semester. Okay, moving on. Approval of minutes from 314, 2022, and 328, 2022, which is, we had a special and a regular meeting. Is there a motion on the minutes of March 14th?
I would move that we approve the minutes of March 14th.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
And a second. Discussion.
I'm still concerned about transparency, things not being attached to the minutes, like the letter from, um, where is it? A bag from Manchester.
Bob Steer.
Yeah, and the letter from Cedric about broadband wasn't attached. And I think in order to really be transparent, that all these things should be attached to the minutes.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Um, I'd like to, I thought that we had the commitment from the town manager that when the, these are, when the final version is approved by the select board and it's placed in the file in the town office and online electronically, those documents would be attached, is that correct?
For, to, to clarify, under the minutes, not the agenda. So, but first, the agenda gets published. So I did put all this stuff out there, but once the minutes have been approved, then I, we started throwing some stuff on there now, start, start putting that stuff on there. What I wanted the board's consensus was, because I've already, I already know what Mary's talked about, Mary Lee has talked about, but do you want everything that's in that packet scanned and put on, on the, or are we talking about select documents? Because if you're talking select documents, then I need a little bit more guidance on what you really want out there.
Good point.
I, I, I don't mean that you should put like the bills and warrants like that. I mean, anything that concerns the public. I just feel that in the past, the town has been very lax in having information in one place. And if it was all with the minutes and somebody asked for it under the open law, then you just go to that one place and get it. Now, I don't know if the board, all the board is aware or not, but October 18th last year, you got a letter asking for information. You have five days, 10 days maximum to have it available. It has been one meet, one week less of six months, and the stuff has not been given. We can be fined, a big fine. If we go to court, we're going to end up paying the other people's lawyer's fees and everything because we are very lax. Whether they're purposely not being given, they're lost, or whatever, I don't know. But if they were hooked to the minutes, they wouldn't be lost, they'd be right there.
So what letter are you referring to, Mary Lee, so that we know what we're looking for?
This is a letter that my daughter wrote.
In regards to?
Sand Hill Project.
Sand Hill Project, thank you. Mike?
So, we, we, it's not, I don't think it's a totally true statement that we didn't give anything. We, we did provide a bunch of information. I, I have talked into Mary Lee afterwards, and I actually had some conversations via email with, with Brenda. Brenda's her daughter. There was some stuff that had like odd pages, the even pages were missing because that was a scanning error. But I know Jonas was, as the zoning administrator, was corresponding back and forth with Brenda, trying to get clarification of what was missing. Because I, and I don't have all that stuff in front of me, so I, I guess I can't accurately reflect on what exactly was said, but I think there was attempts to try to meet on weekends or, and stuff like that, and it hasn't panned out, or that didn't pan out. But I think, I'm not going to speak for you, Jonas, because you're here, that there was, maybe some confusion on what was still missing, and you asked Brenda what was still missing.
As I had prepared for you, I scanned.
Jonas, go ahead. Okay, Jonas.
So I scanned a bunch of material that I thought Brenda was asking for, I sent it to Mutt. Then Brenda, I had asked, Brenda wanted some materials, what I thought was duplication of an early request, and I said, so what is this?
Mr. Chairman, point of order. This, this seems like an important item, but it is not really germane to the question of the minutes that we're considering. And I, I would like to suggest that we address this as a separate issue, either later in this meeting, I suppose we were in a future meeting. I, I, I have a second suggestion, which is that perhaps over this next few days, Mary Lee and Mike could meet, using this agenda and all of its attachments as a basis for determining which of these kinds of things should be shared with the citizens. Certainly from my point of view, every, every document that a citizen submits, because they're interested in influencing the board, should be included. And other attachments as, as well, I think should be included. But clearly, this is an especially large collection of materials that we have tonight, but it's not atypical. And I, I think that presumably, something like half of this is what we need to put out in, in, in public routinely.
What's the board's feelings on Joe's, you made it in the form of a suggestion, Joe?
Yes. I mean, I think if you could come, you know, have a conversation about, you know, yes, no, yes, no, which of these types of documents should routinely be included in a folder that contains the minutes? I mean, in the digital age, the, we don't really have attachments anymore, but we have, you know, we can put them all in the, in the same folder, and that would have the same purpose from a citizen's point of view, I think.
Okay. Any other comments from the board? Dick?
I think Joe's suggestion is a good one, and I do agree with you, Mary Lee, that there are certain things, but you know, that you mentioned specifically to these minutes that should be available to the public. I totally agree with that. And I think that Mr. Mark's suggestion is a good way to ensure that that happens, if you're willing to help Mike out with that.
Okay. So with that in mind, can we go on and act on these minutes, March 14th?
I am prepared to vote on them, Mr. Chairman.
You are?
I have one more question.
Okay, certainly.
We adopted rules and procedures, but we didn't do the annual appointments of several...
I believe they're in the packet. They're in the packet tonight, Mary Lee.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor, are there other corrections on the minutes? Seeing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes, March 14th, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We'll move on to the special meeting of March 28th. Is there a motion?
I would move that we approve the minutes of the March 28th meeting.
I'd second him.
And second. Discussion?
That's specific to the special meeting that occurred at 6:15, correct?
I should have clarified that.
That is correct.
Yes. That's the special meeting that preceded this select board regular meeting.
Okay?
Do you think about the special meeting?
The special meeting. At 6:15, yes. We have, we had a motion? And a second, I believe?
Yes.
Any further discussion on these? If not, all those in favor indicate...
Whoops.
Whoops, I'm sorry, Bob, go ahead.
Just, on page four.
Whoops, we're at the special meeting, Bob.
Those are the other minutes.
Special, the special meeting.
Okay.
The 6:15 meeting, which was a short one.
Yep, I got that one there.
Got it?
Yep.
Okay?
That's all exactly the session stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, okay.
Okay. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. The regular meeting on March 28th, 2022, is there a motion to accept the minutes?
Make a motion, we approve the minutes as presented for March 28th, at that 2, at 7:00 PM.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion?
I have a couple corrections.
Certainly.
Okay. Down here to the approval of the minutes, right on page one, it doesn't say who made the motion and who seconded it. Dick tabled it after, but it was originally a motion made and seconded to approve that right there.
That's true. That's missing.
Okay.
Allison, I'll have to go back through the recording and figure it out, I would suppose.
Yeah.
Oh, on page four at the bottom. And that's the point, in fact, in the very last line, M.L. Harris was a document from, the document was from the, our own rules and procedures that I was referring to. And I also asked about an organizational chart, which I see Mike has given us.
Okay. You got those, the corrections, Allison?
No.
Okay. Any other, any other corrections in minutes, these minutes?
Yeah, I got one.
Bob?
On that same page, page four, about the middle of the page, it says, R. Spalding stated he has heard concern for Drake Road, brush removal. Should be residents in behind Drake Road.
Anything else?
No, that's it for me.
Okay, Joe?
Yes, on page four, the sixth paragraph, second line, any PDA should be any PBA. B as in Bob. On the fifth page, under brief recap, in the first paragraph, the last sentence says, J. Mark stated, instead of what follows between that and pre-existing, I would say there's no indication that pre-existing salvage yards don't need a certificate from the DRB. And the final portion of that, M. Jones will follow up with Jonas Rosenthal, is fine.
Any other corrections?
Allison, did you get that last one from Joe?
No, I'm not sure what...
I can leave it with Mike if that would be simpler, or I can repeat it.
Um, save it with Mike, I'll stop tomorrow and break it.
Sure.
All those in favor of the motions with the corrections, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Moving on, citizens' comments and/or concerns, items not on the agenda. Yes, Helen?
Just one quick question.
Helen Steele?
Yeah.
Okay.
What Mary Lee is asking for, she's going to meet with Mike, and then when we see the final minutes, meeting minutes, you will see the attachments that they agree on when they sit down together?
Certainly. Any other items not on the agenda? Well, I'll get, I'll get you. Rob?
Uh, Rob Steele. I just wonder if we have any kind of agenda for the meeting at the college at the end of the month?
I believe that will be taken up later at the meeting tonight. There are some suggestions, I guess.
Perfect.
Okay? Any others? Yes, Jane?
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna start off this, if you wouldn't mind. Can I, can I say something before Jane comes up?
Yeah, sure.
So, so I told, I already discussed this with Jane, so she knows that was coming, and I kind of mentioned it to you, Jim. But, so I did get a visit the other day from, from Jane and Larry, reference the slate Cory, and what was going on with the zoning, potential zoning violations, and talked to them about the letter that was sent to the select board about their neighbor's dog, and the letter was sent specifically saying that there were certain protocols that they had to follow. So, so I'm talking with Larry and Jane, Nick Law, who live on Bliss Road, I, I went back and I talked to Chris Forrest, the animal control officer, and I also talked to Pete Mantello, the police chief, reference the animal, and I also spoke to Jonas Rosenthal about the Cory, and I actually read Jane and Larry what Jonas wrote to me and what the status of our investigation is on potential zoning violations by unfated green slate Cory. And that's ongoing with the, with the attorney, to look up some documents that we could not find here locally. And then, the animal, there was, in your packet, there was a letter I put in red, red writing, the correct, what I thought would be corrections or clarification, I should say. But I talked to Chris Forrest, who wanted to be here tonight, but he can't be. He came back to me and said that in the zoning, or in the ordinance, that it is eight-foot, not a six-foot leash, so the letter from the select board was accurate. So that would be a scratch, scratch that off there. But as far as what Chris and, and Chief Mantello were going to talk about, was if they have to enforce that letter, they wanted to know, does the home include their porch? Or does the dog have to be muzzled on the property, while they're on the property, loading it into the car to take it to the vet or wherever? That way it's clear for law enforcement and the animal control officer to, to basically enforce what the select board's asking them to do. It was a little bit of gray area there. The leash thing has been satisfied. So, that's what I can tell you right now from what we're doing. Also, Chris, the animal control officer, Chris Forrest, researched and made a bunch of phone calls for working dogs and what's, fowl, chickens and stuff are, fall on that list for a working dog, and basically what it says is a working dog can bark anytime they want. That's part of their function, whether it's at night, or day, or whatever. This is Chris talking to VLCT, attorney.
Point of order?
Yeah.
Joe? I think this time in the agenda is for citizens' comments and concerns, and I think we should allow Jane to speak.
Yep. All that's wrapped.
Okay. First of all, obviously, I'm not happy about being up here again. I have this whole packet of stuff, if you'd like me to go through at this time.
Jane, would it be possible you take, your mask, it, I think it's a little difficult to hear you. Thank you.
Basically, I am here because since 2017, my dogs and myself have been attacked by my neighbor's dog numerous times, involving, if this gives you any idea, how many police reports, letters to the town, not counting how many times I have been up to this select board, to get this problem taken care of. Okay? The last letter to the town, and the one you're saying, after the dog had made so many numerous attacks on my animals and myself, once it was loose while it did not have its rabies shot, it was under quarantine at the time, got loose again within a couple days, and bit me, and bit my other dog, almost ripped his nose cap off. It attacked us again. My puppy, when it was like six months old, out of my front lawn, we had to have another investigation, where it was found that the dog was loose. Okay? Again. Then, after that, it was loose again, and 2020, attacked my dogs, and we had another town meeting, and they decided that the dog also had to be muzzled. A good reason why, every time it's gotten loose, and it has not had a muzzle on, it's come over and attacked myself and my animals. Okay? Also, it has attacked police officers. When they were over investigating the attacks in 2018, it attacked a police officer who was walking along the edge of the road, and this town has done nothing other than say that it had to have a muzzle on. Now they're trying to rescind this letter they wrote, saying that it's not fair to have the dog muzzled, because the dog has rights and the people have rights who own this dog. This is not, it's been an ongoing like 20 or 30 times that this dog is attacked. And then when it attacked the town constable, it went for his face and his throat. Does that give you any idea of what kind of animal it is? This happened not on my property, but down the road, where the owners of the dog, their parents have a place of business, this did this there. The other police officer got attacked at my house when he was walking down the road, trying to get to the owner's house to tell them what was going on and to try getting the dog to stop. It charged him. This was a trained police officer that dealt with dogs, and it attacked him, he had a pepper spray. The town sat back and did nothing after that attack. And I have reached the end of my rope, because this dog in the last couple months has almost gone over the deck two more times to get me. And I have had to talk to the chief and everything else, and nothing has gotten done. Yet, there is one interesting thing that did occur. I got a ticket because my dog barked. It is like, this is the second time this has happened. It is, my dogs are registered as working farm dogs, they can bark, and anytime of the day or night. I don't let my dogs just bark indiscriminately. I do go out, if, I'm usually out there with them, but I always check, is there deer in the yard, is there a fox in the yard? What are they doing, you know, what, why is the dog barking? I have stopped the dog every time. I am just totally sick of the fact that I am getting harassed constantly because of this. And it's all because this dog was supposed to be put down numerous times, and the town did nothing. It states it in all the town rules and regulations, what the dog was allowed to do. It is not allowed to attack people, attack animals, chase and harass animals. And I, you know, I've documented, I don't know how many times, with police reports, investigations, and this town, by allowing them to keep happening, has put me in this position to where I'm getting harassed again, because the dog almost went over the deck. So the owner gets mad, now to spite decides, well, I'm going to call and say Jane's dog's barked. It is not even comparable. And this is not the only thing this town has done to endanger my life and safety. And we'll get on to that sec, when it comes to the next section, which I guess I'm supposed to address now also, is the fly rock that is blown out of the quarry.
Will you stop right there for a second?
Yes.
Let's take one at a time. I believe you heard that the animal control officer is investigating this, your complaint, and as soon as your complaint is finalized with the police department and the animal control officer, you, of course, will be advised of that decision. If you wish to appeal the decision, of course, you can, you can do that. But that investigation is underway, it's ongoing. So if you want to move on now to the fly rock, please do so.
Okay, well, let's just go back to this, where it says the Vermont State statutes. I want to make sure, I'm not going to go past this, this is not going to be hushed up again, because I don't know how many meetings I have been to. I know you're getting frustrated, we can imagine how I feel. How many times I have been to this to address this situation, went with the zoning rules and regulations with the town, with the dog attacks, and also the state. I have told them, my dogs are registered as working farm dogs. Okay? What does a working farm dog constitute? In this state, it is any dog that is red, bred, red, trained, and it can bark at animals, anything that's attacking my plants, my animals, and then they was brought up that poultry wasn't considered an animal, or livestock, which it is. And I don't know whether I should do this here, or am I going to have to do this separate?
What are you talking about now?
The Vermont State statutes that are online. They haven't been able to come up with them yet, and I was still issued a ticket, which is totally illegal.
Well, did you pay the ticket?
No, I did not.
Okay, then you can appeal it to the court. That's the process.
Why do I have to appeal it to the court?
Because you declined to pay it. That's the animal...
No, you're right, but I shouldn't have to keep doing this. I have done this already. The statutes protect me. They state on here what farm dogs are allowed to be doing. I shouldn't be getting issued a ticket for dog barking, let alone what they allowed this dog to do, and nothing has happened yet.
Okay, you ready to move on to the fly rock? No?
Well, I guess so.
Okay, okay, Jane.
I got two questions.
Bob?
I got two questions on the thing, and I think you just answered the last one. You made a statement earlier in your presentation, who is trying to rescind the muzzle order? You said...
I don't know. I heard that they were trying to rescind the muzzle order. That's what I was told.
Who's they?
Yeah, who's they?
I went up to...
There was no rescension. What we were looking for, that letter in there, was to correct the leash thing, that was brought to my attention, that was, that we were going against the ordinance, because the leash, but that's not true, that's been taken care of. The other thing was define home, there's no fenced yard, the, the letter says a fenced yard. So the police department saying, just, can we get clarification on what home means? Does that mean outside on their lawn? Does that mean on the deck? So that if something happens in those instances, that the police, the letter is very clear on what they're, they should be enforcing. And that's what I was trying to say in the beginning, because I've already talked with Jane about this. So I, I, when I talked to him, I said I was going to try to preface this, to let her know, Chris looked up the fowl or the chicken thing, we're good with it. They shouldn't get any tickets about that. He came to me today and let me know that. He, he got a copy of the statute.
Okay, my second question is, and I, I'm pretty sure you just answered it, but this board hasn't answered it. How did you get written a citation if your animals are registered farm dogs?
I'd like, I'd like to know that. I'd like to know why.
I'd like to know that.
I'd like to know why my neighbor's dog was allowed to attack my animals and police officers, how many times, and it has not been put down?
I just, I just want to cover one thing at a time. I just want to know how this town wrote you a citation, if your animals are registered farm dogs.
I'd like to know that myself.
They can bark 24/7.
And I don't allow that to happen.
How did that happen?
I answered it just a minute ago. Chris didn't know that.
That's exactly true.
At the time it happened, we, that's why he came to me today and said, I called the league, I found the statute, so we know what it is now. At the time, they couldn't find where chickens were included.
Okay, I'm not talking about the chickens, I'm talking about she got written a citation, Mike, for her dogs barking. Her dogs are registered farm animals. Farm dog, is what you said.
Yep. In, in the statute, it says...
We need to rescind the citation, because we have no business writing her a citation for those dogs barking.
Now that we've, as of today, it says in there, the dogs can bark day or night. And Chris came to me today with that, so they, he just found that out. So we'll take care of the, the previous citations, but until today, no one's ever come to me or Chief Mantello and said, this is what it is.
That's fine. Just, you were going over her, she hadn't paid her citation, she got no business...
Because I wasn't aware of that.
Okay, you are now, though.
Yes.
So this conversation before what you just said to her goes away.
Okay. And I just want to know, they are aware of it, because I brought it up at other meetings, and that's well documented also, that this has been going on, and it's like a childish brat next door that wants to get back at me. Not that I wanted their dog put down, I wanted it removed from the property, because they cannot control it, and I am sick of getting my life, my dog's life, my grandchildren's lives in jeopardy.
Okay, you want to go on to the fly rock now?
I have a couple questions.
Yes, Dick?
So we addressed this issue on July 15th of 2020. Has, you stated in your presentation earlier that the dog almost got out several times. So my question to you is, since July 15th, 2020, has that dog gotten out and attacked you?
It has not gotten out, it has been loose on the deck where it can jump over, and they, by some grace of God, have clawed it and drug it in. But it doesn't mean that it has not almost happened and jumped over. That's my concern.
My question to you was quite simple. Has that dog attacked you since July 15th, 2020?
No, it's attacked me numerous times before that. One too many times it has.
No, you answered my question. That's all I need, that's all I need, Jim.
Okay, Dick. Shall we go on to the fly rock? No. And please, Jane? And please, Jane, I don't mean to be discourteous, but we have a very long agenda here.
Oh, I know.
Would you please try to be as concise as possible?
I am trying.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Okay, do we wanna go right directly on to the fly rock?
Pardon?
Do we directly wanna go on to the fly rock issue?
Do you wish to discuss it tonight?
Oh yeah.
Then go ahead.
Okay, a couple, uh, meetings ago, I came in and you were going to be hiring a lawyer to look into various things I brought up to the town about the quarry behind me not having permits to operate on some of the parcels and my adjoining one behind me. Okay? There are zoning laws and regulations which they have broke, and they're supposed to be 200 feet away from my property. If you, and as you've known, they definitely are, you can see by that mountain of junk that's dumped almost up to my border. And they were, I guess, Jonas, you can probably tell, they were cited for encroachment?
No, not encroachment yet.
Oh, not yet, okay.
Well, the background on this?
Let's, let's go back to your previous statement, that the town and the zoning administrator were going to hire an attorney to investigate it. That's been done.
Okay.
It's in the process.
Okay.
And the zoning administrator, Jonas, is working with the attorney to try and, uh, come up with a definitive answer on that.
Okay, and then what I'm going to ask is that, that operations on any property which is in question, that does not have a permit, is shut down until which time they can prove that they do? With my main concern being our safety, my families, and all the people across the street who had to suffer from the fly rock episode. We have not had one fly rock episode, as you know, there's been at least three, well documented by police reports.
Jonas, would you care to comment on the process here?
Couple, couple things, I'll adjust the fly rock in a minute. So, the claim, let me just say what we've done. So, the attorney has asked, they've asked, she's asked for as much information about the properties as, as we have. So we have 49, there were 49 filings in the town clerk's records of a variety of things. And what I was looking for was the exemption, was the, uh, the exemptions that were filed in 1997, uh, that exempted active quarries. So, looking for that, we couldn't find it in any of the files. We also, I sent, uh, I sent that information to Merrill. I also sent her copies of all the deed descriptions because there's differences in surface rights and mineral rights and so on. The other greater question that she has is when did the quarry operation start? So, that I don't know, and that's all part of the state filings of, back in 1997. Now, it's not to say that the filings aren't in the town records, they may be in a box upstairs, that's the net search. One of the things that we did find, um, we did find was there is, and I need to find this, there, I, did you ever, did you ever come up with an agreement with, um, on fading green on, on the lawsuit or something? Was that-
Uh, I'm not supposed to talk about any of that, though I will more say, I never came up with any agreement that said that they could come on to my property, encroach on my property or otherwise.
So, as part of going through the 49 things, you know, and Merrill wants as much information about the parcel as possible. There was this permit resolution back in the year 2000, I don't know what it is. So I don't know what transpired, if there was permission or no permission, so on. So I'm just trying to ask, answer Merrill's question.
Okay, I can answer that one simply. They, they were driving onto my property, they were not allowed to drive onto my property anymore, once they made a road on their own property, they weren't to come on to my property at all for any reason.
Right, alright.
And I was not to go on there, it's not that I had any desire to.
So the next step in the process since we weren't able to locate any filings in the town clerk's record, is that we'll start with the, um, the Act 250 office and ask for those three possibly four, uh, I forgot what they're called, or, um-
There were the exemptions that slate quarries, when they're registered-
Slate jurisdictional opinions.
Right, and I gave you a list of all the ones that were covered, and they were not on there.
That's what precipitated this search.
Okay.
To see if we could find that, and we could not locate that, and, and I just wanna preface that with, maybe in a box.
Okay, so the list I gave you was not, that was the factual list from the state where they were grandfathered?
I'm assuming that-
Right, each, each one states on there exactly which parcel of property it was, and how many acres were included.
Right, I'm assuming that, that those are the, that's the state filings. So, Rick Obergerch, the state permit specialist, suggested that we contact the Act 250 office to try to locate them as well. So there's a parallel search for those. One is, we'll have to go upstairs and look through the 1990 box, and then ask the Act 250 office to see if we can get our hands on those.
Okay, now my other concerns here were the fact that we've had fly rock. That is against the, the federal, state, and local laws. It's in our zoning. It has affected our town property value. Nothing is being addressed. I am sick of going after each and every one of these things, but mainly the fly rock because it endangers my life.
It has been addressed, it has been addressed. So let, let me go back, you know, so back in July of last year when this thing happened, Sheriff Mantello did a, an investigation. He followed that up, he gave me a three-page deal, three-page explanation of what he had down, and then followed up with further, uh, information, uh, information request. So, um, back in, and I, I didn't know this was filed, because I filed my stuff in February, but there was a letter from the Vermont Department of Public Safety that addressed the, Mr. Camara getting his explosive license back with certain conditions. So, yes, it was addressed. Has it happened since July?
The fly rock?
Yes.
No, I hope not.
Okay, alright. So when you say nothing, I just wanna clarify that Sheriff, I mean Sheriff, excuse me.
Chief Mantello?
Mantello, uh, did hand over to me his investigation. I followed up with a letter, not knowing that the January letter, the letter to be filed, Mr. Jim Goss, the attorney for Mr. Camara, sent me this. And I said, in, in my letter, it, it said to the effect, the zoning administrator will accept any permit application or underdog, that's there, to correct this violation submitted to the US Department of Labor, to Mine, Safety, and Health Administration, M Shaw, and the Vermont Department of Public Safety. So I didn't, I didn't know that this had already been filed.
Okay.
So, and there was, though, Mr. Camara did not show up for the first meeting, but he did show up for the second meeting. And, so when you say nothing has occurred?
Oh, I'm, there, okay, now, this is what I'm getting at though. What has been done to protect the citizens in this town's safety? What are they doing? Just by allowing, this is what the meeting addressed, they were going to call us. How is a call to our house letting us know they're gonna blast, protecting us in any way? It is not. There are, it mentions in the state and the federal, all those reports, that no blasting mats were used. And when I broached that subject to the person who was doing the blasting, well, it's not convenient for them to use mats, blasting mats. It's not practical. That's, nothing has been done to this state to protect us.
So, whoever said that to you, write it down, who said it, when they said it, because we can go back to the, or somebody should go back to the Vermont Department of Public Safety and say, this is the response that you got. Because number one, zoning regulations do not, we do not have regulations as to how blasts are supposed to occur, you know? I mean, we don't write the book on plastic regulations, do we? I don't know though, I mean, but we have to follow up on that. And if you had a statement from somebody that said, eh, you know what, we don't care, don't like that, then we'll report it to the Vermont Department of Public Safety.
Okay.
I don't know who said what, I don't know when it was said.
Okay, I have police documents stating that too, from the Vermont Safety, and over the years, and it says, go back to your town.
Well, I, I don't have to-
I don't know what I have to do. Are we gonna be dead before they finally decide who's gonna do so?
One at a time, one at a time. Okay, Jonas, wanna finish up and then, Jane, if you have a closing statement or something, we'll be happy to listen to it.
Well, I'd like to-
Wait a minute, let, let's let Jonas, is there anything else, Jonas, that you have?
Uh, just get me the information as to who said that they didn't care, they didn't want it, whatever.
Okay.
And to follow up, or fully, gladly follow up with the Jim Goss, the attorney, and make him aware, and then send that information to the Vermont Department of Public Safety.
Okay, and when they send it back, say you have to go back to you, we'll do the same thing again. Till this time, it gets resolved. Because three incidences of fly rock is way too many.
If they're in violation of, if they're in violation of their license to blast, you know, you know, we don't regulation, we don't regulate their license and how they blast, but if somebody has disregard for what they're required to do, we'll report it. But, but you're telling me it hasn't happened yet since July?
Okay, now, who's gonna take care of the situation of them supposed to being 200 feet away from my property?
Well, that's exactly what, that's exactly what our attorney said. Give me all the information about the property, which I explained to Mike, we've gone through the 49 permit, uh, 49, uh, any parts, certificates that have been filed in the land records, and to, for the purpose of locating that exemption. That's number one, and I will repeat myself again. Number two, we sent all the deeds to, to, to Merrill, and then she has requested that, that we find and locate those jurisdictional opinion, which we're in the process, we have new starting. You know, we have to go to the 1990s file, uh, box, and so we've gotta go there. So, that's not the only thing we do. I have one, a person comes in for six hours a week, who was gone for seven, seven weeks. So, I mean, that's not the only thing we do, and I, I can tell you, without, you know, without hesitation, that Merrill Dent is, is, is very qualified in Henley Land use cases. She just handled, handled the poll for us. So, she knows what she's doing. She's methodical, she wants the information, we've given her some information, we haven't given her all the information, but we're in the process, but that's not the only thing I do for 12 hours a week.
Okay, thank you, Jonas. Thank you, Jane.
Uh, one more thing, Jim, have you made sure that they've removed those tires, which we asked years ago to have removed, which I, I think I also addressed? That was the quarry dumping trash over the hill?
Trash or tires?
Tires, which are illegal to go-
Tires are not a health, tires are not a health hazard, and you can go all around town and see tires out in front yard.
Knowing that they dumped them there, you addressed it, I have letters from you stating that you were gonna have them removed. And I had issues before with them dumping trash and big, huge blue tarp's, which I believe Rutland Harrell even came down and took pictures of, and it took me a long time to get that-
I don't believe I ever saw those pictures, Jane, I hope that Keith Wickham will send them to us.
When would you like the, the letters that you sent to me? And how, when it was addressed and it never-
Whenever, whenever you would like to give them to me, Jane, how about tomorrow?
Okay, I'll be, I'll be with your, at your place tomorrow.
That'll be fine.
And I will also like to address it, so it's out in the public, so they can see what has happened over the years. All this stuff, I am tired of addressing this.
Okay, Jane, okay, that's enough. Thank you. We're, we're moving on it, and we will get back to you. We do have a long, we're almost an hour behind.
Okay, one last thing.
Yes.
When is it going to be addressed? I have a right to have it timed.
When is what going to be addressed?
Any of the issues that I have brought to the town-
As soon as we have answers.
Okay, even the ones that we supposedly started addressing years ago, which I have letters to-
Okay.
-address.
Thank you, Jane.
Confirm that you did get them.
Thank you, Jane. We'll move on to something that is extremely controversial, appointing someone to the CEDRAC board. We have a letter from Liz Byrd asking to be appointed to the CEDRAC committee. Is there a motion?
Make a motion, we appoint Elizabeth Byrd to the CEDRAC commission.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion?
Just wondering that, have we determined the timeframe or the term limits or any of that, is there not?
You have that information, Mike?
I, I don't know what the vacancies are right now, to be honest with you, so I have to, so, again, I think we did this last time, if you, if, if the board wants to, if they do a year, I'll, I'll go back and look, but I don't, I don't have what's vacancies are out there right now. Cause you guys bumped up their number that they can be on there, so they have quite a few vacancies.
Okay.
I can't speak for the chairman, but I'm, or chairperson, but I'm pretty sure there's at least two or three vacancies.
Two vacancies, Dick?
At least two or three.
Do you have any, the timeframe or anything on it?
I don't believe we've gotten smart enough to put terms, or to-
Okay.
To do any terms. I know I've been appointed to the CEDRAC as the select board liaison, and I don't believe there was an expiration date.
No, there, there was two different appointments, and it got brought up about the, the, that before, about the, the term, or the, or no, it was about business owners versus residents and all that kinda stuff, so that, I don't know if that's ever been resolved, but I don't have the answer for you on the term limits.
Wanna wait until you get the term limits, or?
If you wanna do a year, then I-
What's the board's pleasure?
Let's, uh, appoint her now.
Just a second, just a second.
Let's appoint her now for, till, um, how about June 30th, 2023?
Fine with you?
No.
No? What would you like, Merrill Lee?
I have nothing against this lady, but I think because she belongs to the Lake Association, that she should be put on hold until this herb side problem is taken care of. It seems like a conflict to me.
I, I, wow, I wanna say something, but I, I'm afraid to.
I don't agree with that, I don't see how that's relevant, and it's, there's no indirect or direct personal or financial gain for this individual one way or the other, has, because, mainly right, because the CEDRAC will have no influence whatsoever on that decision as to whether or not that pesticide is used.
Um, Joe, you have any concerns on this?
I, I don't have any conflict of interest concerns, no.
Bob?
No, I, I made the motion, so.
You made the motion?
Yeah.
I don't either.
I, I just think as a, as a matter of routine practice, we, we need to get on top of these, um, terms for board members.
Yes.
Uh, we, whenever we consider a new appointment, we should have a list of existing, uh, members of that body and, and their duration of their terms when they expire. I mean, I think most of that is in the town report, I believe, every year.
Yes, it is, yeah.
So, I, I would not oppose this, but I, I think both last meeting when we appointed a new member to the DRB and didn't have answers to this question, and now we're, honestly, we look a little foolish.
We're doing it again. I would have to agree with that, Joe.
Yeah.
So we don't put this on hold? Want me to withdraw my motion?
I think that would be a good place to start a more clean practice.
Okay, I would draw my motion.
Someone will draw the second? Who, who was?
I think I seconded it, so I will draw my second.
Okay.
Just hit the table, this.
No, I don't. Joe seconded.
Okay.
Joe did.
And the concern is the term of office?
Yes.
Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Okay, let's move on. Letter of support to fund a feasibility study for reposing the Castleton Village School. Mary Drosing?
Do you want to come up?
Sure, if you want to, Mary.
Thank you for giving me some time tonight, I'm quite to be very succinct.
I'm sorry, I, I moved that out of the way so people could see, but I didn't mean to be-
Well, now I can see everybody.
Have you talking to our backs.
Um, so, I'm here to make the select board aware of a funding opportunity that potentially could fund a feasibility study for the repurposing of the Castleton Village School, which, as could fund a feasibility study for the repurposing of the Castleton Village School, which, as many people know, was voted overwhelmingly on town meeting day, 83% of the town voted to buy back that building, and recognizing that there's an ad hoc committee that's been formed by Castleton and Hubbardton to address this, but the reason I felt it was important to come here tonight is that the deadline for this funding opportunity is Friday, April 22nd, so it's before the next select board meeting. And, so I'm looking for a letter of support, and this funding opportunity is, maybe you're familiar with the term earmarks, but our federal government has brought back earmarks, which is a type of funding that basically allocates money to a special project in the federal budget, and then it's allocated for that, for that designation. And it's on the Senator Sanders website, he's looking for community projects, there's $38 million congressionally directed funding for Vermont, and the deadline is Friday, the 22nd. So, I know we can't put the cart before the horse to ask for something specific in terms of what to do with that building, cause we have a process that's being put in place by these ad hoc committees to decide what to do with the building, but I thought, many of us thought that a feasibility study, they could look at all the possibilities, would give us a lot of good information to feed into that process, and it's probably a long shot, but I thought it was worth trying. So, that's what I'm looking for, is a simple two-sentence, one-sentence letter of support from the town. And I will be going, trying to get one from Hubbardton as well. Any questions?
Joe, do you, Joe and Merrily, you are representatives on the committee, do you have any comments regarding this, the process?
Well, I think if it doesn't reflect a commitment to a particular direction, and if it doesn't cost either of the towns anything, I mean, if this is gonna be strictly a federal earmark, that we have no financial requirement to contribute to or to match, it's a little premature, but we, we do have a meeting tomorrow, we could bring this up at that meeting, and I would anticipate that our ad hoc committee might say, go for it, good luck. What's your thought Merrily?
Merrily?
I agree with you that after we meet tomorrow with Hubbardton then.
That would be awesome, cause then you could get Hubbardton, maybe on board at the same meeting, right?
Right.
And you can speak for the whole select board if you write a letter of support.
Well, I think it would probably be best if we had a motion to authorize a letter of support pending the endorsement by the ad hoc committee.
So moved, so moved.
I'd like to second that.
Then a second, any discussion? All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Town appointments, confirmed all have, have indicated that they are willing to serve, is there a motion?
Ready Mr. Chairman?
I'm ready.
I will make a motion to nom, to nominate Pete Mantello as emergency management coordinator for a period of one year, ending in March of 2023.
You gonna do them all individually?
Do them all.
I'll do them all, okay. Followed by, all, all these are one-year appointments to end on March, in March of 2023. Pete Mantello, emergency management coordinator, one year. Mike Jones, emergency management director, one year. Joe Bruno Jr.
I have one of those too.
You should have one in your packet Merrily.
Looks like this Merrily.
Okay.
Okay.
Fence viewer for, number one, for one year, Joseph Bruno Jr. Fence viewer number two, for one year. Michael Finnegan. Fence viewer number three is vacant. Any volunteers?
I'll stick my name in there, I'm serious.
Then Bob, Bob, we're gonna do that separately, so you can recuse yourself from that one.
Okay.
So, moving on, that one will remain vacant till later in the meeting. Lumber shingle and wood inspector, Thomas Satori, for one year. Overseer of historic cemeteries, number one, Ray Lad. Overseer of historic cemeteries, number two, Kenneth Flowers. Overseer of historic cemeteries, number three, John Pentello. Town attorneys will be Theodore Parisi, Lois Venedberg Baldwin, and Merrill Bent. Bank designation will be People's United Bank, and the newspaper designations will be Lakes Region Free Press and Rutland Herald.
I'll second that.
Second, any discussion?
One question, what is a lumber shingle wood inspector?
Oh, you had to ask that.
It's just historical, that's all it is.
Can I say something here Mr. Chairman?
Certainly.
There was a wayer of coal until about two years ago, when we dispensed with that one. I got a feeling that the lumber shingle and wood inspectors days are numbered as well.
Okay, any other comments? If not, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
I will also add that we did invoke the fence viewers on one occasion about four or five years ago, so it does, it has come up.
Bob used to be on it.
All right, I'm gonna make a motion that we nominate Bob Spalding for fence viewer number three for one year.
Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Discussion. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye. I'll recuse myself.
You recuse yourself, motion passes. Move on to, moving on to the salvage yard renewal, New England Quality Service and New England Trucks and Equipment, five years. I believe this was carried over from the last meeting. We have a note from Karen in our packet stating, so today I spoke with Wendy at the state DEC office regarding the salvage yard renewal, she indicating there is no sign, no signature was needed from the zoning board of adjustment, in this case, it is the DRB, since it was just a renewal. It only needs select board signatures. Is there a motion?
Why don't you do it, Mr. Coles? I will make a motion that we approve the renewal application for a salvage yard for New England Truck and Equipment LLC for five years Jim?
Right.
For five years. And second part of that motion will be approve the renewal of the application for a salvage yard for New England Quality Services Incorporated for a period of five years.
I'll second that.
And a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I thought there was some question as to the address being wrong.
No, that was correct.
Oh.
That was correct. Any other questions? If not, all those in favor of the motion, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes, I'll pass this around.
What's the ARPA number? 1.34? Buried in this pile of paper somewhere.
Yeah, it's like 1.438, there's change on that too. I got it right here.
That has to be in our motion for the next item.
I think there's, I gotta look, 27 cents at the end.
You said it had 27 cents to that?
I think there's, it's 27 cents on the end, I don't verify it. If you don't want your 27 cents, I'm gonna.
No, that's the total of the listed, now with, oh, right here. Now, where's the?
Total ARPA funds is 1,340,000.
I could just qualify it as rounded to the nearest dollar, would that be acceptable?
Yeah, it's rounded down, cause I think it was 27 cents.
Yeah, it'll be rounded to the nearest dollar. I'm ready for the next motion.
No, they're over there, Joe, they're over there.
They're over where?
Those I, I passed them to, Mike, did you pass those on to Dick and Joe?
The, this is salvage yard thing?
Salvage yard, yeah.
I don't know where we gotta sign, Joe, let's find it.
Here, here, stop, hey, hold on, I'm sorry, hey, that's it.
Oh, here it is, we need the originals Joe.
Okay.
Who made the, Mr. Chairman?
I did.
The town appointments?
I seconded.
Okay, thank you.
Except for his high-paying job of fence viewer three.
I recuse myself.
And who seconded on the salvage?
Salvage?
I don't remember. I don't know.
I made the motion.
You made the motion? I think Bob did.
I think I did, yeah.
Bob did, yeah.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure you did. I think I figured out the next motion.
You already done it over here. Yeah, I think you're, you're just you two.
Okay, moving on to the standard allowance selection for ARPA funding. Mike, do you have any comments on this?
Oh, Jim, did we skip over?
What did I skip over?
The Boys and Girls Club?
It's not on.
No, it was taken off.
That was taken off, yeah.
Okay, it's not on, it's still on mine, so, okay, take that off.
Now, we move on to the standard allowance selection for ARPA funding. Mike, you have any words of wisdom on this?
No words of wisdom, just this, this is the juncture we're at, where this is the town has to make a decision whether they wanna do standard allowance or the revenue lost, lost revenue generator. I did sit in on a class, or webinar with the league, and they stomped up and down and said, standard allowance, standard allowance, standard allowance. It, it gives you the most, broadest discretion to use the money for anything, it's a normal provision of government services, so that's where we're at, need that, so I can move forward into the Treasury Department's portal and do the town's bidding.
I make the motion that we take the standard allowance.
I'll second it.
And a second, discussion?
We need to actually have a more formal motion on that, so this is per the recommendations from VLCT, so Merrily, if you don't mind, I'm gonna ask you to withdraw your motion, and I'll do this.
Okay.
I'll withdraw my second.
I move that the town of Castleton, Vermont, make a one-time irrevocable decision to elect the standard allowance approach for our ARPA award in the amount of $1,348,754 to the nearest, rounded to the nearest dollar, to spend on the provision of government services throughout the period of performance of the grant.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
And a second, discussion?
I agree with Mike, because in the seminar that I just took, that's what he said.
Take it, take it, take it. When you, when they dig into this, it totally makes sense.
Right, okay. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Town and bridge standards, this is something we do annually?
Nothing's changed since the last one, or the one before that. And I think, Brent here?
Yes.
So, if you do have questions, the road foreman is here.
I think Chris is supposed to be on there too.
Pardon?
Chris, Four Acres is supposed to be on, are you on Chris?
Hey Mike, I'm on.
Right. So, if you have any questions, you got your public works director and highway foreman here.
Do any, do any of the board members have questions for either Brent or Chris?
I have kind of an off-the-wall. It seems like there's an awful lot of things that you have to do, and a lot of things that you need to do. Is there any money in the budget, or maybe in some time to hire college kids to help out with any of this stuff, maybe flagging or, or whatever?
That's, that's a question for you Mike, and Chris or Brent?
Mike, I could, I can go first. When, when we, when the select board approved the hiring of the public works director, I had to remove, one of the things that came out of that was removing the part-time help, which included the flaggers and stuff, so this year's budget, starting in, on July 1st, doesn't have that money in there anymore. And that was the, to ease, ease us into having a new public works director in there, so if it's something that the, the select board is interested in when we do the next budget, we can certainly add stuff back in there. But short of that, we, I work with Chris and Brent on the budget, and if we need help, we, there's other places in that budget where we can hire outside services, which can include flagging.
Okay, any other questions? If not, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes, we'll pass this around for signatures too.
Is there actually a motion?
I don't remember, I don't have.
I wonder about that too. Would you like to make a motion that we approve this?
It could be as simple as I make a motion to approve the town and bridge standards for the municipal, or for Castleton, Vermont, for the next current year, with the date of adoption will be April 11th, 2022?
I'll second that.
And a second, any discussion? If not, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Overhead, well, we'll wait, go ahead.
I'll take it over. Sit tight, Dick, sit tight.
You're younger than I am.
All right, don't sit tight. I need to exercise more than you do. I'm gonna be true, you drive all day.
Actually, if you're driving the fuel truck, you do some walking and lugging too.
A little bit, yeah.
Okay, moving on, overhead doors, annual maintenance contract with overhead doors of Rutland. Is, is this the only company that we requested bids from, Mike?
No, we requested it from Ski Door as well, but they, they declined a bid.
They declined a bid? Are there any others in the area? No, okay.
Not for commercial doors.
Not for commercial doors. Were you talking like a doors at the town garage, or?
These are, these are specifically the town garage and the fire station.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion we approve the planned maintenance to overhead doors company of Is there a dollar figure on here? Not really, right?
The bottom is.
Bottom.
Labor rate and stuff is at the bottom.
You want that included in the motion?
Sure, you better.
Okay, labor rate of $118 an hour slash tech, two commercial techs on site for efficiency and safety. Let me read off the rest of it too.
Oh yeah, get the discounts.
Okay, 10% discount on all parts required to be approved by customer prior to install. All service includes a one-year parts and labor warranty from date of service.
I'll second that.
And a second, discussion? Seeing none, all those.
I just, I got one question.
Oh sure, go ahead.
Who's gonna keep track of when they come? Is that you Brent, or is that Chris, or?
That'll be Chris.
It'll be Chris? Okay.
Okay, any other questions? If not, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Looks like there's only a place for one signature?
Yeah, just whatever you guys, who do you want to represent?
Want me to sign it, or? More on doors, quote to replace overhead doors at the town garage, replace two per year. We have again a quote from overhead doors, and I would assume that we also contacted Ski Door as well, and they declined a bid?
Right.
Okay.
So, is that $10,000 a door, or $10,000 a pair?
Mr. Chairman?
Mike?
So, this quote is for seven doors, and the op, the word operators in there is the motors. So, our doors are currently working. The remotes, because of the UL code 325, they, nobody will work. The remotes, because of the UL code 325, they, nobody will work on them. So, we, the choice comes down to replacing all doors and motors at, at a frequency, um, or by eight motors, when, or a motor, I guess, when the remotes go bad and we can't open a door anymore. So, I'm not, what I, what I really want to get out of this was to give you this right here and come back to you with a better assessment. The, the doors haven't been inspected yet. They, they wouldn't inspect them until I signed, had the board sign a contract. They won't come and work on them. They, they just said they were not, they flat out won't work on them without a contract, because they don't know what they're getting into.
We just did that, right?
So, now I can call them and I can get some better information on how many doors are really that bad. Um, and, because they haven't worked on it a few years, and same with the fire station. So, I appreciate you signed the, the maintenance contract, now give me an opportunity to go back with them and have them look at this and give us a better, this will give you the cost of, the scary part is it gives you the cost of what a door and operator is.
That's why I asked, is that?
That's the question the other dick had.
No.
So? Is that the cost of one door?
This is a brand, well, hold on, this is a brand-new quote. The, the first one that they sent me was different layout, so this one right here, I haven't even reviewed the size of the door, make sure everything was correct on this. So, I'd rather not speak until I have a chance to look it over, but I, the first step was getting the maintenance agreement so that we can get a good assessment of where we're at.
Can we table this, Mr. Chairman, to the next meeting?
Sure.
I think, I think we just take no action. It's that simple, Dick?
Yeah. Okay, is that agreeable? Okay, move on. Expenditure of scrap metal proceeds. We have that in our packets also. Mike?
I defer that, Mr. Chairman, if you would mind, to, to Chris.
Chris?
I'm on Zoom here. Uh, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, I'll go through this really quick, but, um, we've been cleaning up, uh, around our areas, between the garage, wastewater, and the, uh, transfer station. Uh, collectively, we have, uh, turned in enough scrap metal to, to reap $3,778.21. With doing so, I'd like to make the following proposal, in your packets in front of you. Um, there are a number of items that we would propose for purchase using those monies. I'm willing and able to answer any questions you have. Most of the reasons are, are listed on the packet. The grand total of that, those purchases will come to $3,340.64, leaving a balance of $437.57 from those return, the, the proceeds given for the return of the scrap metal. If you have questions, I'll, I'll stand by.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion we accept the proposed items for purchase for a total of $3,340.64.
Second? And a second, discussion.
The only question.
Questions for Chris, or, go ahead, Dick.
Well, this is a question for either the board, the town manager, or the Public Works Director. Can we do that, can we authorize them to spend that money without voter approval?
The manager is nodding his head as though he's at Fenway Park.
That would be bobbeting.
Not Yankee Stadium.
Yes, and you've done, you've done it year after year too, not saying that was right in the past, and that's not the statement for that. But yes, you can, I talked to Melanie about this too, to make sure that we were on the, on the right track with it. Because it's not, it's money that wasn't, it wasn't appropriate by the voters, unanticipated revenue. So, you're really spending unanticipated revenue, but the money came from almost everything. I'm, I'm not going to swear to every nut and bolt, but when, when Chris said transfer station, the, the gravel pit, behind the gravel pit, there was old town equipment that we haven't used. It's sitting in there in the bushes. So, it was town monies spent, um, for this equipment, and now it's, the money's going back into the, the town for that replacing, uh, equipment. It's not going to build something, the transfer station or something like that.
It made a lot of sense, I just wanted to make sure it was legal.
Yeah. Sure. Well, I just want to clarify that stuff didn't come from the trans, because if you're pitching, picturing them going down to the bin and taking stuff out of the bin, they didn't do that. This was.
No, we were too lazy to do that.
Any other, any other questions on this? If not, oh, we had a motion on it, and a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris, thank you, Brett.
Thank you.
We'll be along to the next item. Trackless MTST tractor proposal. Chris, I guess that's your baby.
I'm doing that one, Jim.
Oh, you are, Brett, okay.
So, sidewalk maintenance is where we get most of our complaints. We seem to fall flat there. So, we've struggled all winter, tried a couple different things, trying to figure out how we can make it more efficient. You'll see in the, in the packet, I kind of broke down what it takes us for time to do the sidewalks. That's why usually it's two days after the storm before they're done. Takes us pretty much a whole day to snowblow them. We run out of time, and then we gotta go out the following day and sand them. If we get another snowstorm in between, we have to start the process over again. So, we priced some tractors, looked at a new one of these tracklasses, which would scare you guys. So, I've been shopping around, trying to find something used that we can, and this deal happened to come out of Middlebury College. It's the most efficient way that I can come up with doing the sidewalks. We're trying to figure out a way where we can do the sidewalks while the storm's going on, because the more we put new sidewalks in, the more the expectation of service goes up. The skid steer is just, we're six hours going from the village up to East Creek Road, and then we got a trailer back, change attachments, then go back out and start the process over of sanding. That's another three to three and a half hours. So, it's nine and a half hours to do all the sidewalks once. It's not very efficient. And then the sanding is a two-man operation. Plus, when I send the truck and trailer out, it's a two-man operation, it's just labor-wise, time-wise. So, this deal, new one of these machines, just to give you guys an idea, it's $137,000 for the machine. With all the attachments, it's $215,000. We can buy this one for $20,000. I went up, tried it out, took the town mechanic with me, we went through it, took it for a ride around the parking lot. He, he's on board with me, great, great deal for the money, thinks we should do it, so.
Brent, is he able to work on it?
He is, has a Cummins motor in it.
Okay.
Yep, that was one of the first things we checked out. The attachments, you'll see the crazy amount of attachments we get. But the reason I want them all is because when the sidewalk, when we finally do the sidewalk upgrades in the village, every other storm, we're going to be in the snow removal business. Because of the sidewalks, possibly the bike lane, and then the regular lanes, there's going to be no place for snow storage. So, we either, we're going to have to load it out with a bucket loader, or we're going to have to windrow it with a grader and snowblow it in trucks. That attachment comes with this machine.
That it, Brett? That it?
Yep.
What year is this?
This is a 2003. It has 3,000 hours on it.
Cummings?
Cummins motor, yep.
It's still a baby.
Hydrosatic, it's got a two-speed, so unlike our skid steer where you see Heath crawling for the four corners to do the sidewalks, this thing, a high, it's meant to go down the road, it's fast, so we don't have to trailer it anymore. We can go do our sidewalks, drive it back to the shop, get in the truck, and go out and go back on the roads.
If it's in such good shape, why is Middlebury College turning it in?
State-owned equipment, they always straight up and get new.
They're well endowed, yes, thank you.
Still has the stickers in the window from the maintenance.
Where's the money coming from, Brett? Is that?
I believe we were going to do the reserve fund.
Not, well, terminology, it's the, um, the Highway Department Unassigned Carryover. There's $234,000 there, so we're, we're good.
Other questions for Brett? Yes, Dick?
Yeah, specific question. I, what caught my eye when I was looking at this earlier today is a rotary windrow snow blower. Will that take a pile of snow from the side of the road on Main Street and blow it in a truck?
That's what that's for.
So, that'll do that?
We can, so during the storm, once the sidewalks are in the village and we lose that space, we'll plow during the storm, roll the snow to the curb. After the storm, we're down with the grader, roll it off the curb. This takes the snow from the windlobe, blows it in the truck, and we haul it away.
And you don't have to beat up the curbs with a loader?
Exactly. Because we're going to lose that space when we put them sidewalks down there.
If we purchase it, will it require any initial maintenance?
All ready to go.
Okay.
Is it similar to the machine Wes Rutland has?
Yeah, identical. They actually have a, an over-the-rail mower that goes on theirs. But, this comes with two different sets of tires and two bat, no over-the-rail mower, but it does come with two battling mowers, a 10-foot drop-down and a 14-footer.
So, what's a battling mower? Is that on the side or on the front?
It's on the front, but the sides flop up, and then you can flop down, so.
I understand that.
Bow and mowing dewy field or something like that. Not that I want to give you guys any ideas for more work, but.
I'm out of questions.
I'll fill that one. Any other questions for Brent?
Yeah, one, will a motion of 20K do it?
Yep. I beat him up, that's for everything, all the attachments, so. We're even going to get a couple extra snow blowers for in case we need them.
There's no taxes, no shipping, none of that crap?
Nope, we'll go pick it up ourselves.
Okay.
Ready for a motion?
Yeah.
No questions now. Are you, you'll get any, Bob?
I, I'm good. I make a motion we purchase this trackless tractor MT5T with the nine attachments for $20,000.
Give it a second.
I'll second that.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Guess you got a trackless.
Go get it, man.
Thanks for finding it, Brett.
That's a good buy.
Good job, Chris and Brent.
That's a great buy.
Thank you, guys.
I watched him do this with a machine.
Crack sealing bid awarded, Mike?
Uh, I defer this one to Chris, he put all the work into it.
Chris?
And Brent.
And Brent.
Evening again, ladies and gentlemen. Um, so, every year we do a, we do crack sealing. The purpose of crack sealing is preventive maintenance on our paved roads. Um, what you have in front of you was a list of, of roadways, um, throughout the town that we, uh, we put out to bid.
I gave you that, sir.
And we had two companies bid, Fresh Coat and Indus. Uh, Indus submitted two bids, and I'll preference that, uh, the one on the far right where it says alternate or ALT, um, it simply means they also bid using an alternate material other than what we had specified. So, uh, purpose why they did that was to give us a second option that was cheaper than the specified material. So, myself and the road foreman, uh, out of this, these roads created our priorities. They're seen highlighted within the red box. Our budget for this next year is $21,500 for crack sealing. We went into this with the intention of, uh, crack sealing as many miles of road as we could at the lowest price, because we only have $21,500 budgeted for it. With that said, um, we did the analysis between the two companies' bids, and we found that Fresh Coat was the better buy, um, actually allowing us to add one more road, one more road for $2,000, um, for a grand total of $21,250. Um, so, our top priorities were one through six. Uh, the reason why they're filtered, they, they appear, uh, priority one all the way through 17 is because I just filtered it. They weren't in that, that, uh, particular order when the bid went out. But that was our internal one, so. And it related back to our criteria, which was cost, um, and amount of road able to be cracked sealed, or, or our two-weighted criteria that we use to, um, establish the, uh, the areas that we felt needed to be cracked sealed before others. So, we propose awarding the bid to Fresh Coat for $21,250 to crack seal the roads and parking lots, priority one through six, in the red box.
I make a motion that we award a crack sealing bid for this coming year to Fresh Coat for $21,250. I'll second it.
And a second, discussion.
Thank you, Chris.
Seeing no one for discussion, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Okay. Update on the Stone Mill Solar follow-up, uh, the hearing that was held on 3/30/22. Jonas, I believe you have some information for us on that?
And you do have some information in the packets, I believe?
We do.
So, um, so the Public Utility Commission is supposed to meet today, and, uh, they wanted some information from us, which we weren't ready to commit to, but, um, because our planning commission meets tomorrow. And what this information is referenced to is the, this is a, this is a part of the bid by Stone Mill. The bid is by Stone Mill Solar to the Town of Castleton Planning Commission. It addresses landscaping, decommissioning, taxes, and add soils. So, it's a recap of every, just about all the major topics that we had discussed. And the information, no, we had a site visit information, we didn't have a public, in the public here, so, in any event. They did take into account our, the planning commission's concerns regarding visibility, site, uh, visibility and so on. So, in their plan, they added, I believe it was 26% more trees. And the type of trees, they increased the number of trees from 46 to 58. Um, they've had, uh, white pine, scot pine, uh, and the remainder will do the previous trees, uh, tandoor, red maple, and red shale. So, um, like I said, the planning commission meets tomorrow. That stuff is mailed out, all the planning commission members Tuesday, hoping to get, you know, some feedback ahead of time for tomorrow's meeting. So, I just wanted the selectmen to have it, because this memo is to the planning commission. And so, I don't know if the Select Board has any thoughts. And then this. Be nice if you, if you have read it to, to make your comments known. And maybe there's things that need to be addressed. But, just, just by the size of the solar project, 2.2 million, uh, there's a big lot of whatever. It's, um, towns have very little to do, uh, with site, uh, to, uh, having input, uh, because we have no enhanced town plan. We're not, you know, count, in the regular town plan, we haven't identified areas that we don't want. So, in any event, um, this is, this is what you have. So, if you have any comments you want me to take back to the planning commission, which meets tomorrow night. And then I told the attorney representing, uh, it's a built-in, it's a built-in, asked me to get back to the women's seat, which I should have said first because I'm not here.
Okay. All right, um, questions or comments from the board, Mary Lee?
No, I don't like it, but.
Okay, that's a comment. Bob?
I made my comments the night of the 30th, so.
Okay.
I don't need to reiterate it.
All right, uh, Dick?
Just a couple quick questions, I was not there on the 30th. Um, is the addition of the trees to help block the view from the highway, is that the plan?
Yes, and one of the sockets.
Are they going to do anything in the way of a burn there? With trees on it? Okay. That's all I got, Jim.
All you got. Joe?
No comment.
No comment. I guess that's it. Jonas? Okay.
The planning commission will meet and.
Go from there.
Changes, whatever.
Sure. Okay, thank you very much for the update, Jonas.
Yes, thanks.
Moving on to the manager's report.
Oh, God, this thing is forever.
What'd you, what'd you say, Mike?
It goes on forever.
We don't have forever, Mike.
We don't have forever, Mike.
Are we over budget yet?
Can I talk about dogs? So, I don't want to shortchange it, but there's some things in here, I'm on page one. Talking with, this is about the pedestrian accessibility scoping study for the village. So I got another word today back from Devin Neary from the Rutland Regional Planning Commission that we, we will be able to apply for the bike and pedestrian grant to help fund that project. So if you would be so kind to direct me to do that, we will work on getting that application put together. It's not due, I think, until June eighth, maybe I think it was.
You need a motion?
I mean, just mean, yeah, because it's, because there's money that, that you're committing at this point.
Correct.
The town share, twenty percent, and we don't know what that is right now. So however you feel comfortable, but we can always turn down the grant.
Sure.
But if we don't apply for it, we won't get it at all.
Okay. Is there a motion to authorize the manager to apply for the bike and pedestrian grant?
So moved.
Second. And a second?
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, you're authorized, Mike.
Thank you. Same, on page one B, I haven't heard anything back, but we did apply, I applied for the eleven eleven permit through V-Trans, which is for driveway cuts and stuff for that section of, from Castle Corners to Parsons Hills for sidewalks. So ongoing, just to let you know, we're still moving forward. On page number two, Storm, Steso Road Stormwater Scoping Study, that'll come before you guys next, not you guys, but the, the board on next meeting with their final proposal to mitigate stormwater and placement of a salt and sand shed. One thing I highlighted there is the current lease agreement with Pete Ruby ends at the, on May thirty-first, so we're not gonna have a new salt and sand shed by May thirty-first, so the board will have to consider extending that, that lease with them for, it'll be two years before we get something built, so I don't think we're in any danger. Like, we're gonna, like, it could be built in two thousand twenty-three, not gonna happen.
Is Mr. Ruby willing to do that?
He is. He, he, we spoke this, when we were loading up salt this year, there's, there's some work that needs to be done out there, but we've agreed to who does what, I guess. There's some stuff that, in the contract, we have to fix, and there's some stuff that he already fixed, so.
Would, if the sand, by any chance, it's built sooner, would we still be liable for the lease?
We, we'd have to negotiate with him to get out of it, because I don't remember what, I don't, I don't remember a release clause verbatim or something in there to reference, so.
Do we have a one-year lease with an option to renew for another year?
It's gonna come before you, so you can do anything you want at that time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much.
Probably won't be till the first meeting in May.
Okay, okay.
So on page, no questions there. On page three, the Better Roads Grant. So Chris, Chris and Brent worked on these grants. The Better Roads, Better Roads Grant for Class D for the Stealth Street Trestle, he applied for that. Then the, the V-Trans Class Two Structures Grant came out. That's more money, you know, higher cap on it. He applied for that as well. There's a copy of that in your, in your packet. So I asked him to call Brian Sanderson at V-Trans to see if we could do both, and basically we're probably gonna hear back from the Structures Grant, the V-Trans Class Two Structures before the Better Roads Grant, so we can go back to Better Roads and say, we don't want Category D, but we like Category B. And if you look at, above there, it's a culvert replacement, stone line ditches and stuff on Eaton Hill West. So hope we can still utilize all this grant money and we can get the trestle addressed, which is, there's more to it than that, but, and then use the money for Eaton Hill West. That's, that was a good use of that money. But Chris has reached out, he's been talking to V-Trans, and we're concerned that the trust, there might be something going on underneath that trestle, the footings or something underneath there, because the road's sinking. So Chris and Brent are working with, with them, hopefully an engineer in there to take a look at that before we do all this work and then find out there's greater problems than we just threw, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars at it and for nothing. So that was, any questions on Better Roads? Okay, still on page three, item two is transfer station under operations. I spoke with Joe Rice about the layout, and I actually talked to Bob about it, and I talked to, to Jim when I saw him about the layout, and Mary Lee said that she wanted to get a tour up there of the, of the transfer station for that final layout. Well, Joe's saying that it works well, he doesn't see any need to change it, so what does that mean, the so what out of it is? If we want to put in poured concrete walls, we have no money for that. And I can't put that in the operating budget, because we're gonna be talking close to a hundred thousand dollars, probably somewhere in that area, based on what they, the last work they did up there. I got a quote from Myron White, no commitment to anything, just said, I need a quote, and he said he will send me something, just to give us a ballpark. But if we want to get rid of those block walls and, so they're not gonna be falling down and whatever, I don't even, I can't tell you if it's gonna be next year, year after, the, the best thing to do is put in concrete block walls and, but that, I'm just bringing it to your attention, that that would be the way to go.
Mike, you just said concrete block walls, you mean?
No, I mean poured concrete walls. Thank you, thank you.
Transfer station doesn't have any kind of sinking front?
No, they have, well, they have, for the, the truck and the compactor reserve. So I, I put in there, request the select board, consider not, or retracting, I guess, basically the materials for the pole barn and consider, I'm trying to read where I put it. Consider one-time authorization of ARPA funds to pay the installation of the concrete walls where the block walls currently exist. So since you haven't made any decisions on ARPA yet, it's just put this seed in your, in your heads to maybe consider it, if you think it's worthwhile. No questions there? I'm on page five, sewer plant. You, you heard everything from, from Wayne tonight on that. So I'll go by that. I'm on page six, number five, highway department, FEMA. I just talked about that, too, the footers, so we need to get some more, somebody to look at that to make sure that there's not something else going on before we dump a lot of money into that. I'm on page seven. Equipment. You already heard number two about the trackless machine. So that's, I guess we can go by that one.
Take that off your manager's report for the next question.
Yeah, once, once now they're, they're done, I can move them out of there, but some just linger, Bob, for like two years.
Just pick it out of your.
The, under page eight, number eight, emergency management, the local emergency management plan, that's due on May first, so next meeting, I have to get that to you for review. I'll review it with the police chief, fire chief, and the highway foreman and, and Walter for first response. Don't see a lot of changes in it, just some formatting stuff and updating phone numbers and contacts for the stuff that's on there. B, you can read, it's just ICS training. I'm trying to get some, our guys, the chiefs to get the ICS four hundred training. They both agreed to it, just getting a date for them. Number, page nine, fire department. You can read that. Basically, we've met, and I, I followed through and I've sent the chief the information that was requested to be sent to him.
Dick has, Dick has a question.
Can we back up to ICS? I believe that I may be the only select board member that's been to the basic ICS two hundred course, so I'm wondering if you might wanna, maybe Bob went too, I don't remember.
Was that with?
Sean, Sean Galvin taught it over in Fairhaven with you, you, Joe, and I went.
Yeah, I was there.
You may have gone too, Jim, I don't remember.
I don't think I did.
You may not have been on the board that year. It's something that you, Joe, and Mary Lee should consider. It gives you a little bit of insight on, you know, if something really bad happens and we need to set up incident command.
Yep.
That is at least a fundamental of what your part in that should be, or what your role in that should be, and what the mechanics are involved in setting up an incident command system when something really bad happens.
That could be, ICS one hundred can be done online. You just have to register with FEMA's website portal, you can take it right online.
But there's a two hundred course that was for select board members and town administrators that was.
Yeah.
That's the one that I'm talking about.
They're not requiring that one anymore, they're requiring ICS four oh two.
Okay, well, whether it's required or not, if it's available, it's not a bad thing to consider, that's all.
That can, right now, that currently can be also taken online, but that's gonna change. Page nine, number nine, C, operations, well, I just, I talked to them, that's, they've got all the stuff that they needed. Page ten, park and ride, this one's fun. So I finally got ahold of Soul Energy, and I've laid it out here, I hope you, you got a chance to read through it, but the cost to replace the, the gel batteries in those solar lights versus putting up two or three pole-mounted LED lights, it's ridiculous. And then it's every five to seven years, those batteries have to be replaced, they go out of warranty after five, and then we don't know about the controllers, they go out after ten, so anytime after two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five, if they go bad, we have to replace those as well, and it's, that's just the, the cost to buy it. That's not the cost of shipping and the cost to hire a electrician to do it. What I'm recommending in here is, we abandon the solar lights and we just put in some regular streetlights that we don't have to worry about, we don't have to worry about their warranties, we don't have to worry about all this cost, and be, and the solar lights, if you look at that, I did the math for you, three hundred, three thousand six hundred and seventy-two dollars every five to, to seven years to replace twelve batteries. And the cost of a streetlight, all three streetlights was what, four hundred and thirty-five dollars a year? Divide that out there and. Yeah, and it, so it'd take eight years of paying the streetlights to equal the cost to replace twelve batteries in the solar lights every five to seven years.
Need a motion there, Mike?
I don't know. It's, I'd like to get a quote, I already had the quote from, from Erica from Green Mountain Power, so I just need, the only thing I don't know right now is if they'll waive the, the pole cost installing the pole, so that, we need to hear back for her on that. So I'm not, I guess I'm really not ready for a motion till I can tell you how much it's gonna cost for the poles.
Perfect.
I'm on page eleven, number, number eleven, select board, the auditorium, we're good, I think you already knew that, but we're good for the auditorium for the herbicide meeting on the, I don't know if it's a meeting or not, but, the twenty-seventh of April at six P M. Under A.
Okay. Dick has a question.
Somewhere earlier in the meeting, we had discussed that we were gonna, or you had suggested, Jim, that we were gonna either take comment or start creating an agenda for that meeting?
I believe Joe has some thoughts on that, yeah.
Is it appropriate to do that now, or do you want to do that during select board concerns?
Do it under select board concerns.
Okay.
I'm, I'm not gonna talk, obviously I'm not talking about the union negotiation stuff. It just happened, the first meeting, it was a meet and greet, basically, with ground rules were, was had already, and the next meeting is set for April nineteenth. And Rick, under, on page eleven still, eleven B recreation. Just to have a conversation with the board about whether to make recreation a department, dissolve the commission, who they report to, where they're gonna hang their hat, I mean, I, I guess I can take care of that part, but, but do you want to make the thing, the recreation a, a department rather than a commission? And that's the recommendation coming from Martha, was to make it a department. We already, it's already set up like a department as far as the accounting goes. It's just recognizing it as a department rather than the commission.
Yes.
Yes. Is there a motion to, to take Mike and Martha Clifford's recommendation?
Yeah, I, I'd want to split that. I'm in favor of creating a, a department of recreation. I think the question of the commission or an advisory group of some sort probably needs some further conversation with the commission itself.
I was thinking some sort of steering committee needed to exist.
Like give them direction and, and something like that?
Yeah. Is, is that a motion, Joe?
Yeah, I, I would move that we create a new administrative department of recreation.
I'll second it.
And a second. Discussion.
More discussion to follow, but none right now.
Okay. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you.
That's it.
And then the last, you know, was already addressed, number twelve, so barring your questions, that's it.
I, I do have a question.
Sure.
If you want to. Rutland County Solid Waste District, Mike, did they, they move their hazardous waste day to two hours instead of three? Is that correct?
That's what I heard. I, I've received several complaints. I've, I've written off to Mark Shade, so we can have that discussion. I talked to Joe about it. Yeah, it was, there's, there's a lot that went wrong there, and they, because they already cut their hazardous waste days from four to three, and then they cut, if they cut their hours, they're really, really hurting us, so more, more conversation will be had on it and the displeasure and how we move forward.
Okay. Can I comment on that real quickly?
Pardon, go ahead, Jim.
I think in addition to cutting hours and cutting events, they cut staff as well because there was only two people there this past time, and I think there's substantial room for improvement there.
You're not gonna cut staff more, are they? They're only?
There was only two people there.
Oh, two people. You normally have three?
I don't, I can't speak to that for sure. I believe there was two or three in previous years, because I've been there in prior years, and it was a pretty painless process. This year was very painful.
I think the problem was Mark Shade was one of the two, and he's never done it before. And last year, all three events we had, sorry, I'm Joe, Chief Operator, Transfer Station. Last year, it was only two hours each time. You know, and Mark's initial comment was, you know, just tell people to be here earlier. Okay, you get thirty people there at eight-thirty in the morning, and you're only getting through eighteen, twenty people in two hours, now you gotta tell those people that were there at eight-thirty to have to go home. I told them that we need more time, we need at least four hours, especially on the first, on the first event, we need at least four hours, if not a whole day. I mean, if you gave us a whole day, you can work your calendar, you work your schedule to be in facilities, especially ours, it being as big as it is, you could work your entire schedule for the year to be here for a whole day. There's no reason that they can't.
It's money, because it costs a lot of money to have the hazardous waste day, so I, I know where it's coming from, but we'll follow up, or I'll follow up with, with Mark Shade and find out what they're gonna do to plan to fix it in the, in the future.
Joe?
Yes.
Just, Allison, did you get Joel for identification on that?
Yes.
You did? Okay, good. You're all set. Okay. Anything else on this? Bob, you got something?
No, just a point that they, they raised their district surcharge and they're giving us less services. That's all I wanted to say.
Okay.
Just make a point of that.
All righty.
That, that's it. On that particular subject.
Okay. Anything else for Mike?
Manager's report, no.
No? Okay, then we'll move on to purchase orders for approval. We have one that we approved at the last meeting, but was not reflected in the, in the minutes, so we need to redo that. I guess all we have to do is change the date. Bob? Do the honors?
Okay. Oh, yeah. Make a motion, we approve to VFIS purchase order zero four eight zero six six. Incentive.
It's insurance for the fire department.
Yeah, insurance for the fire department. I just wanted to read it off the way it was.
Sure.
Incentive package, I think is what it says. Six one twenty-two through five thirty-one twenty-three for a total of twenty-nine thousand forty-seven dollars. That's it. Twenty-nine thousand forty-seven dollars.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
And a second. Discussion?
I'll recuse myself.
So, okay. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Here's a few more for you, Bob.
Great.
That's what happens when you sit there.
You want to switch spots? Make a motion, we approve purchase order zero four eight two one eight to Brown's Corried Slate Products. I'll quickly run down the list. Stone for Belgo Road, Stone for Frisbee Hill Road, and that's it, for a total of.
$2,940.
Second.
And a second. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Make a motion, we approve purchase order 048216 to Ferguson Waterworks. 120 feet of gray culvert for future road projects. For a total price of $2,958.80.
I think that's a 38.
It's 38?
38, want my glasses, Bob?
Well, no, that's, you take a look at that.
That's okay.
It's 2,938.80.
I'll second that one too.
And a second. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next one.
One you can read up. I think so, make a motion, we approve purchase order 048413 to Holland Company Incorporated. I don't know what the product is, it says one...
Alum.
What is it?
Alum.
Alum.
Alum?
Wastewater.
Okay, one each of alum for a total price of $2,646.60.
I'll second that too.
Second. Disc- discussion?
That's for the stewardess.
What is alum?
Alum.
What is it?
It's part of the disinfectant treatment, uh, process, it's inju- it's, uh, in the affluent when it goes through the...
All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Is that the last one, Bob?
That's all you gave me.
All I gave you?
Good thing, 'cause I kinda fumbled it.
That's okay. All right, we move on to the warrants.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, we approve warrant number 0411R for $650. Warrant 0411 for $115,847.11. Warrant 0407 for $27,0021.76. Warrant 0331 for $6,007.63. Warrant 0408P for $16,930.56. And warrant 0331P for $17,331.8.
There's a second. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Think we got a couple others here, don't we?
Make a pro- motion, we approve warrant 0409P for $634.28. And 0332P for $634.29.
Is there a second? A second. Discussion.
I'll recuse myself.
So, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's going around for, all those, motion passes, going around for signatures. Rest of this is just information, Mike?
Yes.
Hey, Jim? I think we wanna let you guys, uh, have an hour, right? I appreciate the atmosphere.
No, no, please, please, stay, don't, don't leave.
We're just warming up, guys.
Okay, thank you for coming.
That, or you start at your next class an hour late.
You have my cell phone number, Dave?
You're welcome.
Thank you, guys. Sorry it took so long.
Probably like, mm, 10, 20?
That way, if I'm not sitting at the desk, you'll, you'll still reach me.
I appreciate it, thank you, Mike, guys.
This has been a long one. We're not done yet. Do we have any executive sessions?
I don't anyway.
Good, I don't either.
There's, there was a message on the screen from Kim Perhoda from the schools. Kim Perhoda from, about the school budget vote on Wednesday. She, right there, she was remind, she's put, she typed it on the chat. Just reminding everybody about the revote on Wednesday.
I think so. I didn't count them, but...
So... Mr. Chairman, that horizontal chart, now that you've made a motion to make wreck a department, I'm gonna have to change this.
Okay, go for it, go for it.
While we're on the subject, I had a question about, um, the zoning administrator. This makes it appear that, uh, the zoning administrator is supervised by the planning commission.
This was, yeah, I, I took this off, off the old one that was signed, so I didn't dare change anything until you guys, 'cause you guys, this has already been signed before. So if you wanna make changes, that's why it wasn't on, I didn't put it on the agenda or anything, give you a chance to look at it.
You found it.
Yeah, you know where I found it, like, right on the bulletin board, it was leaning up against my book cabinet. I was sitting there looking at something, I'm like, what's that spreadsheet?
I knew we had done it.
Yep, it's signed by three people of the, of the five select word numbers.
Who are those three people, Mike?
No, everybody except for Joe Bruno and Bill Potter.
Who were the other three people?
Jim, Dick, and B- Bob Spalding, I believe.
Was it, I just curious.
You know, I have, I have a copy.
Did we do that, Bob?
We started on the same day, Bob. This time around for you.
For here.
That was signed it?
Dick, yep, you, Dick, and, um, Jim.
I remember seeing that.
Uh, when Mary Lee brought it up, I knew it had one, I knew it existed.
I question whether the zoning administrator shouldn't be under...
He should be under the town manager, in my opinion, with a dotted line.
I agree.
I don't know. I don't know.
Yeah, I think so.
I don't think it should be under planning.
I agree with that.
Be a dotted line to both planning and DRB.
I would agree with that, that makes sense, but it needs to report to the, uh, to the town manager.
Okay, um, select board comments and/or concerns, uh, one of the items we're gonna talk about a little bit here is the format for the meeting on the 27th. I believe the board has, at the last meeting, indicated that the supporters of the petition would have an hour, and the opposition would have an hour. It does not have to be consecutive, it could be broken down. Joe, what are your thoughts on this?
Well, I, I think it would be, uh, preferable to break it into two blocks for each party. I, I think this is almost something that's taking place as a debate, and, you know, the, the pro and the con usually get to alternate so that, uh, they have the opportunity to comment on or disagree with some of the points that the other side had made. I guess I have a question too, whether we want to have just sort of an open opportunity for, for people who didn't necessarily connect with either the supporters of the petition or the opponents of the petition. I, I can imagine that people, a lot of the people who show up will have connected with other of the groups. But I can also imagine that some people will just walk in, not necessarily having made that connection. And I think it could be a little frustrating if people don't have the opportunity even to say, you know, a minute or two's worth. I, I do think, um, we, we wanna make sure that is, you know, is well-controlled and respectful. But I guess I would say we flip a coin and we give, you know, one side the first half hour, the second side the next half hour, the third half hour to the first side, and the fourth half hour to the second side. And then perhaps close with, um, a, a short amount of time, 20 minutes, for other comments from the floor.
Is that agreeable to the board?
Well, I like that, yeah.
Like that? Dick?
The only thing I would add is if there's any select board follow-up at the end of the meeting, that that be on the agenda as well.
Okay.
What do you mean by that, Dick?
Yeah, what do you mean by that?
Well, just if there's something that, um, and I don't anticipate, nothing comes to mind specifically right now, but if we have, we'll call, we'll call them the for and the against viewpoints, each get their hour respectively, and then we have an open comment. Now, if there's something that either myself or Bob or you wanna follow up on, we should have an opportunity to do that.
Sure.
Sure.
That's the only thing I'm saying.
To ask somebody in the audience if we have...
Or, yeah, basically, you know, if something comes up in your mind and you make some notes through the meeting and it's not appropriate to interrupt in them, for whatever reason, that you have, as a board member, we have an opportunity to address any issue we feel is still there. And it should be on the agenda.
I'd like to suggest that people who plan to speak sign up when they come in, so there is some type of order that we would follow. And that the leaders on each side structure it so that we will remain within the time limits that have been established. For example, if someone gets up and says something, then they've said it, that's their position. And we really, do we need five other people saying the same thing? Or saying what you would find in a state hearing, and that is, I agree with Mary Smith with what she said, and then we'd move on to the, to the next person who'll be talking about a different point, let's say, that's all. Any other? Joe?
I, I know this is, uh, an opportunity for the select board members to comment. I, I know we have people who have probably hung around this long because they're interested in this topic. Should we allow comments at this point?
Sure. Any like to comment on what we've discussed? Well, first of all, are the, are there any objections within the board to this format?
No, but there is something, a question I think that should be asked.
What's your question?
Um, would it be appropriate or wise to ask the town manager to, to, or town moderator to chair this meeting?
Be fine with me.
No, I, I, I'm just throwing this out there.
Be fine with me.
I, I don't know if it's legally required.
No, this is, this is a select board meeting.
It is a select board meeting?
I hate to say it, but yeah, it is.
Okay, I was told it was gonna be a public meeting, is what I was told.
It is, public meeting. It is public. We could ask.
There was a distinction between the two.
I'd be, I'd be more than happy to entertain that motion.
I understand why you say that, but, uh, I'm gonna not make that motion. Tag your it.
Okay, just, I'll get, I'll get your time.
Select board meeting?
It is a select board meeting.
That's not what I was told, but...
Well, it, it is, it is a public meeting, but it's, it's the select board, you guys are the ones that are calling the meeting. And there's three of you there, so, at least, so we're it.
Because at the town meeting, the moderator has to moderate it.
Yes, correct. Exactly, like he did tonight for the, for the informational meeting, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Anything else from the board? Tom, you had your hand up.
I think you should, and I'll volunteer, Mike, to do, uh, I think that Mike Finnegan can do this meeting. I think it is gonna be contentious, so I think whatever the board can do to keep a lid on it, you're better off it's gonna be.
We will do that, Tom. It can be, we can disagree, but we do not have to be disagreeable.
I agree, but it's gonna be heated, I think.
However we do it, but I think that I, idea of, do you think the ma- the town moderator would, would volunteer to do that?
I can ask him.
You can ask him?
Last night, I knew he'd planned on doing it.
That's what I was told.
He did?
That's what I was told two weeks ago.
Well, I, I think...
I mean, he's well-paid for the year, he gets $25 a year.
I know he is, I know he is. You think he'll charge us extra for this, or?
Be good practice for him.
I think he expects at least two Pepsis.
Right. Well, would, can we do that? Can we, uh, can we ask Mike if he'd like to do that?
I would support that.
I would support that, so would I.
Absolutely.
Mary, Mary Lou, Mary Lee, I'm, uh, uh, I almost made Mary Lou again, I'm sorry.
The level of...
Bob, I guess, okay, I guess.
I'll ask him.
You'll ask him? Alrighty. Anything else? Yes, Rob?
Um, will Zoom be available for us?
It is, and I upgraded the license to 500, um, people, so we can have plenty of space for people to join. We only, we only have the 100 before, so it's up to 500 now.
Will there be a PowerPoint available, or something similar to that?
Well, I don't, I mean, the, the agenda may, but we don't really have a, unless you're providing something, I guess, and, I don't, we don't have anything I know of.
Well, no, I mean, I was, I would assume that either side could bring a, you know, PowerPoint presentation that we would plug into your...
Yeah, I just, and that, is that an option?
It is, we'll be, we'll be set up with a computer there, so if they can bring something that we can plug in, a thumb drive or something like that.
Okay. Yes?
Hi, I'm Lynn, then Dee. Just back up just a little bit to clarify what this meeting is. It's a, is it a factual meeting of the select board, an informational meeting hosted by the select board?
I believe it's...
What is the meeting?
Did you say fact-finding? And then, if, it's an informational meeting, yes, it's that, hosted by the select board upon request.
Okay, does anyone wanna repeat that, that, the, the meeting is?
I would call it an informational meeting hosted by the select board.
That's exactly what we said, yeah.
Just what he said.
Yes?
Uh, Jody White, um, is the select board gonna take any action at this meeting or directly after it? Or is it gonna be more of, uh, like, it'll, it, whatever comes up at this meeting will be taken up at subsequent select board meetings?
It may be, yes, at, at a future meeting, it could be, yeah. Yes?
Um, I'm just curious, um, so if potentially Mike Finnegan is moderating it, meeting starts, I believe, at 6 o'clock? It's scheduled 6:30. For someone who walks in off the street, is there any like welcome, this is why the select board, is there a member of your group that
Yeah.
be like, almost like an emcee or a host, or... I, I just say, if someone came in off the street who wasn't informed about the situation at all, would there be some way to at least bring them up to speed a little bit? Or will the responsibility to bring the audience up to speed, would that responsibility lie on, we talked about maybe flipping a coin? The situation arose because of a action by one of the groups. It, it would almost, to me, seem like that group would have some responsibility to say, this is the situation.
Yeah, they'll...
One group is responding to the action of another group.
Right.
Had one of the parties not proceeded in the way that they did, there might not have been an issue, I don't know if I'm making sense, maybe, Rob, you wanna jump in on that?
Yeah, I would, I would just say, instead of flipping a coin, let the OBA go first, that way they can explain what they've done with the permit application, why they've done the permit application in case there's somebody that just happens to wander in that doesn't, doesn't know what's going on. 'Cause if our group goes first, we're just gonna be saying, they applied for a permit, we don't believe that they should have, you know, la da da. But if they go first, they can say, we applied for a permit for this reason, this reason, this is what we've done. I just think that would seem more of a feasible...
A lot of merit for that.
Makes sense to me.
Makes sense to you, makes sense to me?
Absolutely.
Okay?
That's a good suggestion, Rob.
Right, nope, no problem.
Well, no, I was just, I was just trying to make sense of how it might look like.
Well, no, you, you said a chronology that makes sense.
Yeah. Okay, anything else on this?
That's why you understood it.
Any other?
I just had, I can, real quick, I know, um...
I can draw with crayons, what can you do?
Eat 'em.
I, I've not talked to her, uh, she sent me an email and I responded to that.
Okay.
I, I think, uh, I haven't shared this with the board, I, uh, I have mentioned Cynthia to the board previously as someone whom I've known for many years and who, uh, is, is the, by far, the most qualified scientist on the Castleton faculty, who, who has expertise in this area. Having, uh, being a, you know, PhD biologist, a toxicologist, a full professor, and a former employee of the EPA. And, uh, she is willing to, to speak that evening, 27th. She would prefer her own time slot, which maybe everybody would. I think the board, when we last discussed this, was, was inclined to have her join the group that has concerns about this. Is that, but, but I throw that out there.
Yeah, I would, I would say that's accurate, yes.
How much time would she need, Joe, do you know?
She said, uh, 20 minutes. I, I, I take that to mean that she could do... I, I, I take that to mean that she could do it in a bit less time than that.
Then you folks may want to plug her in. Plug her into your, your presentation. Okay? Alrighty. Anything else on this? Any other comments or follow-up from the board?
On this topic?
Pardon?
On this topic?
Other topics.
Uh-huh. Well, if we have more on this topic, okay.
Yes, we have other topics, I just know, didn't know-
Yeah, that's why I was, I was gonna move on if there wasn't anything else. On this item.
On this item, no.
Okay.
Not on this item, I'm good.